Good evening and welcome to the Scarborough Board of Education Business Meeting. The date is Thursday, August 21st, 2025. Ray, can we call the attendance, please?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Kelleher.
Here.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Here.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Here.
Ms. Tarpenian.
Here.
All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.0 is approval of the July 17th, 2025 business meeting in July 24th, 2025 retreat meeting minutes. So if there are no objections, we will approve those as presented. All right. Agenda item 5.0 is a consent agenda. These are not action items, just for the board's information, the July resignations, retirements, and new hires. So just ask you to review your materials if you haven't already. Agenda item 6.0 are adjustments to the agenda, and we have one, but Freila, I'm going to need your help. One of the, one of the policy KFs we need to them, but I couldn't remember which one. Can you just take a look at the agenda? Do you have it there with you?
Yeah, let me pull that screen up. Just give me a moment.
I was afraid I would choose the wrong one.
That's fair. All right, looking at that. So I, just to rephrase, I think we, our intention was KF-P use of school facilities procedures is to be retired essentially, and then we'll keep KF-R use of school facility regulations and KF-P use of school facility fees. We had two KF-Ps floating around during our policy meeting.
So we're going to keep KFP, just call it use of school facility fees?
That's correct. Yeah, that's the spreadsheet that we went over.
Okay, so do we, I thought we only had two, but we still have three?
Well, we have KF, the facilities policy.
Yep.
There's KF-R, the use of school facilities regulations, and then there's KF-P use of school facility fees, retiring the other KFP use of school facilities procedures.
Oh, okay. Procedures. So we're retiring, so I think I have a couple then. So the, I'm going to bundle them all into my amendments. So we, we're going to retire KFP use of school facility procedures. So we need to have a new 13.6. We're going to have the first reading of policy KFP, which is now called use of school facilities fees. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we are not retiring, if you look at 13.9 on the agenda, are we, we're removing that because we're not retiring, oh, sorry, rewording that. That's a first reading. Not a retirement of IHBB-R. Are we retiring, or we are retiring that? I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. So I'm done at the KFP.
Yeah, moving on to AHBB. We are retiring one of those. It's been kind of consumed into the IHBB, which we will be having for first reading today.
Yes, thank you for refreshing my memory. Okay, so then I, my adjustment to the agenda is to update 13.5 to use of school facilities fees and then add a new 13.6, which is to retire KFP use of school facilities procedures. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Can we call the board, please? Freila here. I mean, for the remote.
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Here.
Ms. Tarpenian.
Here.
All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.0 is approval of the July 17th, 2025 business meeting in July 24th, 2025 retreat meeting minutes. So if there are no objections, we will approve those as presented. All right. Agenda item 5.0 is a consent agenda. These are not action items, just for the board's information, the July resignations, retirements, and new hires. So just ask you to review your materials if you haven't already. Agenda item 6.0 are adjustments to the agenda, and we have one, but Freila, I'm going to need your help. One of the, one of the policy KFs we need to them, but I couldn't remember which one. Can you just take a look at the agenda? Do you have it there with you?
Yeah, let me pull that screen up. Just give me a moment.
I was afraid I would choose the wrong one.
That's fair. All right, looking at that. So I, just to rephrase, I think we, our intention was KF-P use of school facilities procedures is to be retired essentially, and then we'll keep KF-R use of school facility regulations and KF-P use of school facility fees. We had two KF-Ps floating around during our policy meeting.
So we're going to keep KFP, just call it use of school facility fees?
That's correct. Yeah, that's the spreadsheet that we went over.
Okay. Okay, so do we, I thought we only had two, but we still have three?
Well, we have KF, the facilities policy.
Yep.
There's KF-R, the use of school facilities regulations, and then there's KF-P use of school facility fees, retiring the other KFP use of school facilities procedures.
Oh, okay. Procedures. So we're retiring, so I think I have a couple then. So the, I'm going to bundle them all into my amendments. So we, we're going to retire KFP use of school facility procedures. So we need to have a new 13.6. We're going to have the first reading of policy KFP, which is now called use of school facilities fees. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we are not retiring, if you look at 13.9 on the agenda, are we, we're removing that because we're not retiring, oh, sorry, rewording that. That's a first reading. Not a retirement of IHBB-R. Are we retiring, or we are retiring that? I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. So I'm done at the KFP.
Yeah, moving on to AHBB. We are retiring one of those. It's been kind of consumed into the IHBB, which we will be having for first reading today.
Yes, thank you for refreshing my memory. Okay, so then I, my adjustment to the agenda is to update 13.5 to use of school facilities fees and then add a new 13.6, which is to retire KFP use of school facilities procedures. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Can we call the board, please? Freila here. I mean, for the remote.
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Ms. Tarpenian.
Yes.
Ms. Tarpenian Huff.
Yes.
All right, so that passes. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, agenda item 7.0 is the superintendent report, so we'll pass it to Diane.
Sure, thank you. As you can imagine, we are really gearing up for back to school right about now. Really excited for our staff to be returning next week and also our students. So I just thought I would take a few minutes to do a look back and a look ahead with you. So again, if you've had the opportunity to be in around our schools, Shannon, I know you were at Sneak Peak today. There is some really amazing work happening in our buildings to get them all ready for our students to return. So things are really shaping up. That is no small feat for our facilities department and our custodians, especially with the really consistent use that our buildings get, especially Wentworth. And so they are still making some final, doing some of the final cleaning at Wentworth because of the basically constant use that it has through the summer. We have had a lot of really great work happening with staff. We welcomed all our new staff on Wednesday with new staff orientation. I would say there were probably just under 35 people who joined us there. So the majority of new hires that were there are support staff, but it was really excellent to be able to engage with those folks. Our curriculum department, Katie had put together a staff symposium opportunity last week for staff, and so that enabled our staff to get a closer look at our curriculum and some of the programs that we use, and so that was a really well-planned activity for those folks who could do that. And we also have spent a lot of time this summer, our curriculum department, Katie and Kelsey, working with staff on social studies curriculum and doing some ELA curriculum work just on Monday. In fact, I think we had nearly, oh, 47 educators who came for an ELA day, and so they had lots of different offerings that they could participate in, and that was a first-time event, and it was super highly attended. So that was great to see that our staff have been really engaged in work despite the fact that it's not their, you know, summer's not their general work time. We also have hosted really robust student programs this summer. Our extended school year services for special education students, those programs were very successful. We held a great elementary reading academy. Again, this year, it was great a couple weeks ago to be able to go and visit with them as they did their final presentations and sharing with their families. Our middle school hosted another round of connections. That has really taken off in the past couple of years since it's been started. We have lots of sixth grade families who are taking advantage of the opportunity to help onboard their students to middle school by signing up for that. High school, we continue to offer credit recovery opportunities for students in the summer, and so that was very well-attended. And then finally, just last week, we held our kinder camp at all three of our primary schools, and so it was really a great opportunity for our incoming kindergarten students to get a little bit of a taste around what to expect, to navigate their school, to be able to take, you know, to learn how the bus works and ride the bus. So again, you know, hopefully that is all in an effort to allay some of the anxiety and anxiousness that they might be feeling about coming to school. As we look ahead, as I said, we have our opening days for staff coming up on Monday and Tuesday of next week. Monday is a building-based day. We had polled our, our staff a few years ago about how to best use those two days when we were able to move to two days of professional development, and from a staff point of view, they really want to be in their buildings and have time in their buildings that first day. And so we have organized our district day for the last few years so that our district opening is actually the second day. So on Tuesday morning, we'll have a great breakfast for everyone in the district, and then we'll convene in the auditorium for a welcome, and what we hope to be is a really great keynote speaker. This year, our keynote speaker will be Jordan Toma. So I know that I had already extended an invite to all of you, and if you are able to join us, we would love to, to have you pop by. As far as students next week, again, as a district, we are very appreciative of the board's continual support for these by appointment days for K5. So those will be happening on Wednesday and Thursday next week. Those are all organized, and all of our families have appointment times and know when they're going to come to the school and, and have that dedicated time with their child's incoming teacher along with their child. So I know that we get rave reviews from families about that and huge appreciation from our staff to be able to begin formulating relationships right from the start. I think that's a hallmark that here in Scarborough, we really put a high premium on the value of relationships, and it's great that we can start in that way with our students. On Wednesday, again, talking about a great start for our students, Wednesday is a sixth grade-only day at the middle school and a ninth grade-only day at the high school. We've done that for a number of years, and again, as our students are acclimating to a new building, different type of programming, it's really wonderful for them to be the only students in the school on that first day so that at least they can take a breath, and it's not so crowded, and all of the staff really dedicate efforts to special programming on that day. So we're looking forward to that on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, the Uh, and then on Thursday, the twenty-eighth, all of our students in grade six to twelve will have school. And then following that, um, the Tuesday after Labor Day. Um, we will have all of our students um, back in school for the new year. So we're really excited about that. Lots of, lots of things happening.
Oh, it's hard to believe this summer's over. Wow. All right, um, are there any questions for Diane? I, I just had one. Can you, um, how's the turf coming? Were you still looking to be on time?
So at this point in time, we are expecting that the turf will be ready for use on September first. So um, you know, that is uh. Due in large part to many great efforts um, of Kate Bolton, who has learned so much. Over the summer about um. Replacing a track and then how to button up turf afterwards. So. Kate really has dedicated a lot of time to that project um, on behalf of the district. And um, I think we've worked hard. Yeah, sure. If you want to come up, that'd be great.
Did you actually button the turf?
It has buttons now. It's really cute. Uh. No, we're, we're using uh, construction lingo here. Um. We, we know all the, all the phrases now. Um, no, I just wanted to say that um, the, the folks uh, at Heimlich, who are the subcontractors who have been doing the, the paving and all that. Site work that you've been seeing out there. They have been so amazing. They're the nicest, greatest, smartest, cleverest people. Um, to work with and their, the quality of their work has been awesome. Um, so shout out to those guys. We do have a lot of sort of, you know, what ifs because we're getting right down to the wire. Um, we hope that the weather will cooperate and it has to cooperate in a couple of ways. It has to be. Hot but not too hot. It has to be dry. Um, but not too dry and, and so uh, they, they have to glue. The, the turf back and they have to cut it to the shape that the track is now, which is a little bit different. Um, so there are a lot of things, a lot of moving parts. But um, we're hoping that all of the field stuff around the outside will be accomplished um. This weekend into the middle of next week, and then they're gonna roll the turf out, start on Monday, let it kind of rest and do some things, and then Thursday or Friday. Um, next week, they're hoping to cut it and place it and be done with that piece. And then we have to get a friend of ours to come in and paint. Some of the lines on there over the weekend. Um, one of our vendors who is a super sweetheart and is willing to do that work on the last moment. So the big goal is starting Academy. On September fourth. Y'all come.
We'll be there.
Okay. Um, one final thing is that the actual rubber surface for the track won't be on yet. Um, that doesn't go on until the asphalt's cured up a little bit more. Uh, but we don't need it yet, and so we're in conversation about whether that's gonna happen like. Intermittently through the fall or whether it's gonna happen right before track season in the spring when they do actually need it. Uh, but everything will be usable and accessible.
And without that, there's no damage for like football cleats walking on it to cross the.
No, it's, it's like a road. It's asphalt. It's like, you know, if you walk down the road, you're not gonna hurt it with your cleats.
Okay.
Um, if you uh. If you, you know, drove a semi on it, you might have some issues. So we're not letting them do that. You know how those athletic people are. They want to drive their trucks. Right? But no, we're, we're really excited. It's, it's looking really nice. It's, it's coming together.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Thanks for sharing. All right, um, agenda item eight point O is the chair report. Um. I have a couple of things. Um. I laugh because I was just telling Jillian, I don't like slides. I'm never gonna use them. And then I'm like, but I have a lot of dates. So today I have slides. Um, the first is the M S M A, um, the Main School Management Association, their annual meeting is, or annual fall conference is coming soon. So this is a save the date. It's going to be October twenty-third and twenty-fourth. It's um. Open to board members and administrators, um, superintendents. Uh, it's going to be at the Augusta Civic Center. It's eight to three both days. I don't have an agenda yet. The only thing that they had, um, they've come out with is their um, keynote speaker. That looks, actually looks really good um, to talk about. He will talk about leadership and developing leadership and people. Um, so if you're interested, registration for this will open. In September, um, outside of the keynote speaker, there's a lot of educational opportunities here. So for those of you that are newer, if you're able to go. Um, this is a really, really awesome opportunity to participate and learn and get to meet people, um, you know, school board members from around the state and. Um, all of that good stuff. So um, registration will open in September. So if you are interested, you could let Cheryl know. Um, and she can, she can sign you up. All right, the next slide. Okay, also coming up is our, um, the main school. There's lots of acronyms. This is um, a little similar, a little different. Main school. Um, Board, School Board Association, their annual delegate assembly. So um. As you recall, Charlotte is our representative for Scarborough, and so. She will attend, oh, she will only be the only one to attend. It's October eighteen from nine thirty to two on Zoom. Our role as board members, however, is to read through the, what's dra- what's um, linked here, but also I've sent it to you. The proposed resolutions and the constitution and bylaw changes because. What Charlotte's job is, is to do is to represent our um, our views and our, our thoughts about these proposed resolutions. So um, I just thought I would. Back up a little and give everybody just a brief overview about what this means. So when you look at the constitution, their constitution, um. This assembly has four specific powers. They adopt resolutions, um, they transact any business. They um, elect officers and they adopt amendments to the constitution. Those are the four. But those resolutions that get adopted, what those are, they ex- they um, outline the purpose of. The M S B A, it outlines what their views are going to be and what, how they're going to advocate on behalf of schools going forward. So that's why it's really, really important that Charlotte go armed. With a lot of information about how we're feeling um, about things like how. And when I say how we're feeling, what I'm specifically talking about are how are these proposed resolutions and constitution and bylaw changes? How might they impact Scarborough? And if we agree with them, or if we don't agree with them, or if we want her to say, you know, we really um. Don't want you to vote for this, that would be something we would need to discuss with her. So our job as um, even though we're not attending, is to read through these resolutions and these proposed changes. And come prepared to our next board meeting, which is September third, and discuss um, our views on this. All right. Okay. Um, my next one is that we have an open um, Board of Education seat. This is open because um, Alyssa Peterson uh, resigned. So this is a partial term um, that uh, runs until June of twenty twenty-seven. So for anybody who's interested in serving the community, the nomination papers are available. Um, and are due back to um, the town office on, at five o'clock on September third. So hopefully you'll join us. All right. Last night was a very interesting town council meeting. Um. There are, there's quite a bit, quite a bit of irons in the fire. Um, I think. Majority, as you can imagine, majority of the meeting was centered around the proposed TIF district in the Dunston area. Um, lots of, I, I think it was probably an hour and a half or maybe even more of public comment. So. I've never seen this room so full. It was, um, there was probably three rows of people standing behind the rows of chairs, and then they were out in the hallway. And down the hallway. So there, there was a lot of people here. Um. So that uh, that took up, like I said, majority of the meeting, but what was really great is that. When they were finished with the public hearing, they moved on to the referendum language and approving the referendum language and. Um, two of the counselors were absent from the meeting, but the four that were there unanimously approved. Putting the school on the ballot, um, both questions. Um, so this is for every, anybody who's unsure of what we mean, we say two questions. The first question is what you see on the left. Um, that is the K, essentially the K through eight um, school solution to address overcrowding. Um, so Eight Corners gets a new school, Pleasant Hill, Blue Point get a renovation in addition. Uh, Wentworth gets a minor renov- uh, excuse me, minor addition. And then the middle school gets a renovation in addition that will um, allow us to serve our current enrollment. There, if you, if a voter votes yes to question one, they then get to vote on number two. So it, one depends on the other. They have to vote yes for one to get to question two. Question two is an additional ten million dollars. At the middle school, which will allow us to do a larger renovation for what we project is coming to the school. So um, both were unanimously passed. They did um, also include the language that I know you've seen. Um. We haven't had um, a public conversation about this, but the language or surrounding. Um, the town council and the school board uh, recommends that the, that this be approved. So um, Bill Donovan, or Counselor Donovan did a wonderful job of explaining that that is actually is a legal requirement. So um, it doesn't say anything else. I know um, you know, there's been a variety of languages that we've looked at, but what they ended up going with, it simply says that the town council, the school board. Recommend approval of this, of this, these questions, and it'll, it'll be written under both. All right, any questions for me? All right, agenda item nine point O are the committee reports. I know that we've, we're in the summer. We don't really have um, committee meetings running right now, um, and we also. It's a little, for anybody who's watching, um, our, our year runs a little bit different from a council year, so we actually just sat. Her board member in June and um, we shuffle our committees and change our assignments and so, and it's the summer. So between all of those things, the committees generally don't. Too, too much. So um, I know we just have, have a couple of reports. The one committee that meets every week uh, through the summer and throughout is the communications committee. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna take this one?
Sure. I mean, there's, there's a lot going on, actually. Lots of uh, moving parts, but we met. Tuesday at noon by Zoom and every Tuesday. Until after, or until the referendum in November at noon. Um, there's a. Big Scarborough Living article in the works. Um, a lot of people have been working. Like double time on that. Uh, the event tables are in full swing. We need volunteers. I know Shannon personally made about four hundred and fifty. Sign up geniuses this week. Uh, and we have a small group, people working on other small group meetings uh, to talk about. The project, projects, uh, and um, we have. Social media work that needs to be done, so lots and lots and lots going on. Uh, these. Meetings are full, so there, I would encourage you. So.
Yeah. Yeah, and you, um, you'll see us. Uh-oh. Are we up? Oh, oh, I think we're good. Okay. Um, you'll see, those in the community will see us um, a lot in the town. There's a lot of events coming up. Um, back to school nights, um, ice cream socials at the schools, uh, at the younger grade schools, um, open houses. Uh, all of those, you'll, you'll see someone from the building committee or a volunteer. So it's. Other thing that. We, we didn't talk about that they're doing, they're really drastically overhauling the website. So, yeah, like going back and um. Uh, trying to update it to where we are now, um, what's imperative for people to understand about the projects right now. So that is um, that is ongoing as well.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot being done. We did this, we did Summer Fest. Um. Uh, both Shannon and Frayla were there. Um. Frayla, Frayla was out front the whole, the whole time. Uh, we had an interesting time with the cotton candy. Uh, some of us may still have some in our hair.
Hair.
Uh, and yeah, it was fun though. It was fun. We laughed a lot. It was good. I mean, it is actually, it's, it, if, you know. It's a, it's a lot of really good work.
I did hear from a parent that they were very impressed with your skills and their daughter was very happy at the size of their cotton candy that you made. Versus perhaps somebody else's that made. So, yes, I did, I did hear that feedback. It was a lot of fun. And today was good at the, we were, this was what Diane referenced when she said that middle school, um. Sneak peek, we were there for that as well, and it was, it was good. Yeah, it went really. It went really well. So lots of events next week, um. And then around the community. So if you see us, come, come say hi. And be on the lookout for an email from me about volunteering. With all the four hundred and fifty signups. All right, and Jillian, or no, no, I'm sorry. I don't, that was totally out of habit. Charlotte, this is yours now.
Um, yeah, so. New to chairing uh, the communications committee, um, we'll have our, our first meeting on Monday, August twenty-fifth at three P M via Zoom. Um, we'll do a lot of planning for this upcoming school year. Um, and I'm excited to be adding a focus to community engagement and outreach, outreach um, aspects to this community after speaking with Shannon and. Um, learning more about this role. Um. Was fortunate enough to chat with Jillian about the um, the work that you guys have all been doing with the upcoming Spotlight Awards, the Scarborough Living Magazine. And just really working to find a reoccurring. Time and day for a regular meeting, but um, really excited to be able to um. Ho- hopefully take off Ray's plate and, and really reimagine this the way that you, you hope.
So, thank you. All right, now Jillian, now it's your turn.
All right, yeah, we, we met uh, last, on August fifteenth. Last Wednesday. I don't know, what, what day is it? Um, uh, we got to chat with Katie about maybe some goals, um. Working, looking at a schedule, um, possible topics. Katie has some topics to. Bring to us and uh. The other board members were also encouraged to come up with. Things that they'd like to discuss. We are in search of a recurring date and time. Um. Some people are still sett- settling their schedules for the year. Um, and then our next meeting is next, uh, sorry, September seventeenth at three thirty I zoom.
All right, negotiations. Frayla.
So we had um, successful mediation, which means we'll be voting on a, on ratifying the contract for professional staff. Which is later on in the executives uh, session. Uh, and that's for uh, negotiations for this year. This was tip, in the prior years was our off year. Um, but because we passed a two-year educational support professional contract. Um, we will be getting started on that contract this year, and my hope is to get. That kicked off as soon as we put uh, the professional staff one to bed, which that will conclude last year's work.
Very good. Thank you. And you wanna keep rolling on?
Oh, yeah. So the policy committee um, has been meeting. Um. I think we took a break in July, but we've met uh, throughout the summer and usually still see a lot of policies on, on this. Uh, agenda. We finally, we finished a couple of big, bigger policies having to do with the school use facilities. And that's the fees that we charge for rentals. Um, and the student transportation policy. Uh, I'm sorry, the student transportation policy also um, uh, took us. Quite a while to gather all the information, um, to make a recommendation on those two. Um, you also, uh, we got to a second reading of the concussion policy. Um, we had no feedback um, from uh, the board. Uh, we had a couple of staff. Just helped make it the language a little congruent, but I'll go into that when that po- policy comes up for vote. And we did I H B B, which is our nineteen eighty-three policy. Um, so now we're in the two thousands, which is exciting. Um, and we finished the public gifts donations to the schools. Um, we're meeting um, right before the first board meeting of the month. Um, so that Thursday, so our next board meeting is on September fourth, so we'll meet from five to six thirty. And then um, come downstairs for the meeting at seven. Um, upcoming, we're reviewing policies in reverse chronological order, um, from oldest to newest. Um, and we're gonna go over some of the board officers um, and governance, um, which is the B. The, all the policies are, are A B's to go through, are an alphanumeric. Uh, organization, which I still confuse all the time, but the Bs have to do with governance, so we're gonna go through some of the governance policies. Um, and then we're working with the town on the facilities naming policy, which I feel like has been on the agenda for the last two and a half years. Um, but I think we got some good news and hopefully we'll be able to move that policy forward. That's not a current policy. It would be a new policy. But yeah, policy is in full swing and we'll keep churning them out.
Awesome. All right, are there any questions for any committee chairs? Or any other committee updates? All right, I don't know that there's any liaison. Reports, is there any?
No, I was just what you talked about. From last night?
Yeah. All right. All right, um, okay, so perfect. Our agenda item eleven point O is general public comment. I don't see anybody here. Is there anybody online? Okay, so seeing no one, I'm going to close general public comment. Agenda item twelve point O is continuing business. Twelve point one is a motion to approve our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school board goals. These are the goals that we worked on at our retreat. They are online for our goal setting, I should say, goal setting retreat. They are online for anybody who's interested in reading it, but I'll read them quickly for us. Goal one is to collaborate with the town council to pass the twenty twenty-five School Solution Referendum on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. The action item there is the school board will dedicate sufficient time and resources to ensure a past referendum. Two, the school board will update the community about progress toward the referendum at every school board meeting. Number three, the school board will support the communications effort to educate the community at large about the project. The district's needs and the potential impact on student success. Our goal two is the school board will actively work to strengthen engagement between the school district and the broader community. Fostering meaningful relationships, encouraging open dialogue and creating opportunities for involvement. That reflect the shared values and goals of our schools and residents. So what Charlotte was alluding to falls under this, that we are really taking a broader look at our efforts. So our action items are that the school board will host a fall and spring community gathering to share updates and gather input. The school will develop and distribute a comprehensive calendar of district-wide events to the broader community. To encourage participation and to highlight the diverse initiatives taking place across our schools. Three, the school, the school board will find effective and consistent channels of communication to reach the broader community. Number four, the school board will reimagine the communications committee to better align with the board's renewed focus on strengthening community engagement. This evolution will prioritize inclusivity, transparency, and innovative outreach strategies to better serve all stakeholders. So that would, the shortened version of that is that the communications committee's name will change. To a community outreach committee. And then the these action items would really fall under under that committee. The fifth is that the school board will uphold a culture of accountability by actively participating in all facets of boardwork. This includes consistent attendance, preparation for meetings, transparent communication and engagement and strategic planning and community outreach efforts. Goal three is that the school board will promote a district-wide culture of inclusion and success through ongoing development in all subject areas. Student spot student support opportunities, social emotional learning and through district-wide D E I work. Our action items there are the school board will review student success metrics. The school board will get an annual report from the leadership's professional development team focused on. M T S S, the multi-tiered systems of support and D E I initiatives. The school board will hold a minimum of two workshops related to this goal. The school board will continue to build capacity and understanding about student-centered work happening within the district through routine building presentations. And the school board will develop and adopt a comprehensive definition of D E I that reflects the values and goals of the district. So those are the goals we came up with. They're pretty hefty, a little bit more robust than what we've had in the past, which is actually pretty exciting. So do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six goals as presented?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All right, can we call the vote, please?
Ms. Jacobs.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penion.
Yes, although I had a point of clarification.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I should have jumped in before the voting started. The. Action item under the last goal, having to do with defining what the E I means for the district. Is there an I, is there a plan to delegate that to a committee? Or how I just have a question about about who's going to do that or when that work is going to happen.
We are going to do it. We had discussed holding a workshop. And so right now, I tentatively have that for a December workshop for us to get started on.
Fantastic. I just was wondering about that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Penny Huff.
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. All right, agenda item twelve point two is the second reading of policy J J I F, management of concussions. And as Freyla said, there's a couple of wording updates, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. So we didn't have a lot of work on this policy. Because first of all, most of it's mandated in state law, so it just wasn't a policy that we had. A tremendous amount of the ability to change, because there's a lot of mandates that have come down from the state. We did get hear back from folks who would be on our concussion management teams. That's our athletic directors, our nurses and other individuals that we have that work closely with this policy. They had some concerns just that anybody who, so in this policy, if there's a concern that somebody has. Has a suspected concussion that they 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 have to be evaluated by school personnel. If school personnel are not available, because let's say the the suspected concussion happens off school grounds, maybe not during the school day. School, they wanted to make sure that prior to that student returning to normal activities and extra, including school. And then extracurricular activities related that are also at school, but you know, a sports participation, et cetera. That those students would also be checked out by school personnel. So that if, for example, somebody got injured over the weekend and they came in and said, I got all cleared. I have a note from the E R doc who saw me or the nurse practitioner, that our school management concussion management team would also have an ability. To just review what is done and make sure that they also concur that the student's appropriate to return back to all normal activities. And so we we think that the policy does do that and takes care of that concern. And we also made some of the language more congruent. So there was a couple of different places in the policy. That stated a school health professional, a school health personnel, and we just made that congruent throughout. We chose school health professional because that was in the definition section. And so we changed any any reference to school personnel, school health personnel to a school health professional. And that specified who can do some of this work and who might be on that team. But otherwise, we didn't make a lot of substantive changes from the time when we reviewed it last time.
All right, are there any questions for Freyla about the changes?
I have a question. What you were just talking about, you know, if something happened to off school grounds and then somebody from the school had to, will that be a medical professional that is? Evaluating?
Yeah, it would most likely be a school nurse. And there's there's. Yeah, in the policy, it defines who is on that team and includes the school nurses.
I just heard other people. I'm like, how would they be able to?
Like the athletic trainer.
All right, but not. All right, okay, cool.
If somebody has a brain, has has an injury and it happens outside of the school and they come back and they say, we're all good. We just want to make sure that our our health professionals, who will be the ones caring for the student if something goes wrong, also sign off on them being good. Just in case, you know. Making sure that students get the care that they need and are on their appropriate activities before they return. Because some some people want to rush it, rush back, and we want to make sure that everyone gets the care that they need so that their brains can recover from what are brain injuries.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the pressure didn't fall under Ray to make that decision, so. Ray's like, what the? I don't know, maybe?
Ray has lots of hidden talents. I don't know if he's got a medical degree also.
Well, and I asked a similar question because if you look at the members of the team, some of them seem to not fit on first blush, things like your school counselor. Right? But what the reason they're there is because when someone's making a graduated reentry plan, the counselor might be the person that helps them. Right? But they're not the person that's verifying medical. Yeah, no, I asked the same thing. I asked.
Games that don't have athletic trainers at.
It's a good question. All right, do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy J J I F, management of concussions as presented?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All right, we call the vote.
All right, Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penion.
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That is unanimous. All right, agenda item twelve point three is the ad hoc school building communications committee governance document. So we had approved this, just as some background, we had, we, the board had approved the document. We had asked for feedback from the committee prior to our approval and they did give it and it was incorporated. And then the committee started having some second thoughts. So and asked us to relook at it. And so what you're looking at right now is the the version that we approved with their changes. The committee's changes incorporated. So I'm just going to go through what they are in the rationale. And then we're going to revote on this. So the very first thing they wanted to do was change the name of the committee. They wanted, they felt very strongly that the S V A C is well-known in the community. And by removing the word building from the name, that it kind of separates them from the S V A C. And so they didn't want people spending more time wondering what happened to the S V A C versus focusing on what the work is. So their suggestion was to change the name to School Building Communications Committee. So that's the first change. The second change is just the name again. The the next substantive change is the membership. So they, the committee is interested in having interested Scarborough residents apply. What however, they want to be sure that there is an alignment with the goal of the committee. Which and the duties and responsibilities of the committee, which you'll see listed in just a minute. And not somebody, not have people who were on, who were looking to come to the committee, but not actually looking to do work. And so that was a really big concern of them. So why they want to be, they want to be open and will invite any interested resident to participate. They want to be sure that they that person will commit to the duties and responsibilities as they're listed. So that is that that's the big change there versus just anybody could come. They also have a provision in here. We had two school board members, if you recall, when we first looked at this, the town council passed on participation. Their communication committee met and actually decided it was a good idea for them to have a participant. So now there's two school board members and one member of the town council who serves on the committee. The next big change is the duties and responsibilities list on the second page, if you keep going down, right? There it is. These are the duties and responsibilities that they wanted. Anybody who is going to be on the committee to be able to agree to. So very quickly, that list includes be an advocate and support the mission of Scarborough School Solutions Communication Committee. Do not take a stance on the referendum, but provide educational information on the referendum through the community. Attend all weekly committee meetings. Prepare for committee meetings by reading materials provided and completing all assigned tasks in a timely manner. Participate on at least one subcommittee. Maintain current knowledge on new school proposal with community input. Participate in recruiting new members, identify sources of education for the referendum. Recognize the proper role of the committee and help educate the community about the referendum. Keep all confidential information confidential and act in the best interest of the town and excuse self. From discussions where there is a conflict of interest. So you probably see a theme in here. It's very important. They understand that it is very important as a school board committee. That they are an educational committee. They're not a. They're not an advocacy arm. They're not a group that is that is working to advocate for a yes or a no vote. They are simply educating the community. And so that is the underlying theme of these duties and responsibilities. So that somebody either for or against the school doesn't come to this committee with the intentions of. Running their personal opinions through. That's not what this committee is for. And so they're very, very intentional with these about that. So those are the big, those are the big changes. They're asking us to consider the changes and approve this document as they are presenting it. All right, are there any questions for me? Yeah.
I don't know if solutions here should be changed to building.
Yeah, I believe that, yes. School. Building Scarborough School. Thank you for catching that. Building Communications Committee. Yes, thank you. So I updated that first duties and responsibility. All right, and any other questions? Thank you for that. All right, do I have a motion to approve the ad hoc school building communications committee governance document as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, can we call the vote?
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penion.
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That shows a unanimous. All right, thirteen point O is new business. Thirteen point one is a literacy aim module knowledge building project grant. Yeah, for this, I would ask Katie if she'd like to come to the mic and share with you. This grant opportunity and the work that was done.
Yes, so at Eight Corners School, they put together a team to complete what the. M D U E put out for a grant, the AIM Literacy Module Knowledge Building Project. Was a grant for elementary educators with a specific focus on engaging in professional development. Based on the science of reading in the particular areas of phonemic awareness and phonics. In order to receive grant funding, the school had to have a team of at least five participants. Complete the modules within the time of the project. At Eight Corners, they had a diverse team of five educators. Cassandra Salve, who's their instructional coach. Jennifer Vitagliano, their special educator. Tracy Seymour, their early intervention educator. Erica Kay, their academic support teacher, and Rebecca Savante, their academic support. Support staff member worked together to complete the project. So they completed the professional development modules in literacy and as a result of that were awarded. Five thousand dollars to spend on literacy materials from the state.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Are there any questions, Katie? All right, do I have a motion to approve the literacy aim module knowledge of knowledge building project grant as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Thank you so much for that. That's really exciting. All right, can we call the call the vote?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penion.
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff.
Yes.
Shows unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen point two is the Full Plates Full Potential Grant. Yes, in your packet, you'll see a letter from Kate Bolden. Kate's here tonight, so Kate, if you want to speak briefly about this or not, that is up to you. Wouldn't want to deny her the opportunity.
Never let me say that I won't come to the microphone if given the opportunity. Full place, full potential. You may see their names in the newspaper in all kinds of articles around food insecurity in Maine. This is an awesome organization. Working at the grassroots level to try to make sure that children in particular and families in Maine are not going hungry. And so one of their projects that they do every year, and this is, I think, the third year now that we've been awarded a grant. Is to make sure that summer programs are supported. Because a lot of times kiddos who rely on school meals to stay healthy during the school year. Lose that opportunity in the summertime. So we're applying this five thousand dollar grant to. The backpack program because that's the easiest way for us to access families who don't automatically qualify. For the summer programs by being in a school program during that those summer months.
And that was a five thousand dollar grant, right?
It's five thousand, yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's really great. Absolutely. We love those guys.
Are there any questions for Kate? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the full plates, full potential grant as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penian.
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff.
Yes.
Perfect. That shows unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to bundle thirteen point three, thirteen point four, and thirteen, the new thirteen point five. So this is the first reading of policy KF, use of school facilities. The first reading of policy KFR, use of school facilities regulations. And the first reading of policy KFP, which is now called the use of school facilities fees. So Freila, I'll take, turn it over to you.
Sure. So the use of school facilities just, just goes over the rules that we have for folks who want to use the facilities that are outside of our school, such as our turf and other, other things. It establishes a priority of that use. So obviously for school educational activities and school events, extracurricular activities, we get the first, kind of our first priority. Scarborough Community Services gets second priority. And obviously, we're very close, our organizations work very close together. We have a lot of shared services between us and, and these school facilities. They run the after, after square, sorry, before and after care, and other programs a lot of our students take advantage of. Then priority three is for organizations and citizens of the town of Scarborough for activities, as long as they don't interfere with the conduct of school programs. And then we have non-residents or commercial organizations are the fourth priority. And that goes through all of the facilities that we have. So the use of our auditoriums and such. We have prohibited activities, so there's things you can't do, sort of. And then there's an application process about when, how to make the application, where to make the applications. They're all done online now. And that's a sort of automatic. You may recall us adding a position or joining with the town in a scheduling position for these facilities. And these are the policies that they are, they're using to decide who and how facilities get shared. That's, that's what the, the KF is mainly about, sort of the rules. And it has some, you know, some standard contract language about how to terminate these, if the renter are cancellations, written agreements and stuff like that. The other two policies that go with this, which are KFP and KFR. KFR, the regulations, again, it restates that priority, one through four, of who gets priority in scheduling those facilities. And administrate, administrating, sorry, administering the rental fees for those. KFP is the fee policies. And we actually, as a committee, and a lot of thanks to Ray and Diane, went line by line through the entire, through all of the fees and updated them. And then, and then touched base with all of the applicable departments. So, for example, if you're going to rent the cafeteria, you have to have kitchen staff there. We made sure that the hourly rates kept in line with our salaries, which all have come up with our new CBAs. So that when we are renting these facilities, we're not losing money. Because oftentimes, we have custodial staff or we have kitchen staff that are picking up extra shifts. And we're paying them overtime over and above their normally scheduled forty hours. So we want to make sure that our fees keep in line with the costs that we incur when we're using the facilities. So we spent a lot of time on this policy. It's a really technical policy. There was a lot of consulting with other sort of parts departments to make sure, for example, renting the piano and how much is tuning for the piano. So it got to be, we got really in the weeds in this policy. But I feel like, the committee felt like we had kind of gotten to a place where the priority is set, the rules are set and make sense. And then the fees also have come up and are in line with what our actual costs are. Because we don't, again, we don't want to be losing money on renting facilities to outside groups. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I'm happy to take any questions.
Just two things to add, if I may. On the fee policy, Ray just discovered on page four, under one to the third and the fourth line, food service worker, it says $4,245.
That's a lot of money.
Yes. I'm going to change jobs, yes. So we're going to update those two to be $42 for the third, the third line and the, and the fourth line.
Thank you.
That's the first. And then the second thing, I thought we should mention to the rest of the board so they kind of understand what's happening. Inadvertently, when looking at this, we just, at this policy, we discovered a line in the, the policy that says, it reads, I'll read it to you. All fees generated by rental of the artificial turf field at Scarborough High School will be deposited into an account reserved for the repair and eventual replacement of the field surface. So that was unbeknownst to, I think, all three of us on the committee. I, I, Ray, we asked Ray to go back and find the account and see how much was in it and what, if it had in fact, because as you know, we had to take out a bond to replace the field. We did, Ray did locate it. It is managed by the Community Services Department. Roughly, it was $145,000 is in that account. The estimate was that it's about five to seven thousand a year to maintain the field. And that's generally what they bring in every year. So we discussed what to do with the money that's sitting in there. And ultimately, it can't just be our decision. The town is a shared user of the turf and the, the field. So where we're, we're at right now is we've asked the town to sit down with us and discuss the next steps for that money. In addition to that, the other conversation we had was around shared pieces of equipment. For example, the goals, the lacrosse goals or the soccer goals. Because we use them and community services use them. So how do we go about replacing those and who pays for it when they do? Is there shared responsibility there as well? So likely more to come on both of those issue. We're just waiting to set a meeting right now with the town side. All right, any questions for Freila? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy KF, use of school facilities, KFR, use of school facilities regulations, and KFP, use of school facility fees?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penian.
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff.
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. Our new thirteen point six item is to retire KFP, the use of school facilities policy. So do I have a motion? Well, do you want to tee that up first while we're retiring it?
Sure. When we went through the policies, we, we noticed that there was a dup, kind of a duplication of policies. The KF, the fee schedule is what, what should be KFP. And then we had another policy. Everything in that policy is, is in our KF policy. So it was really a duplicatious, duplicative, duplicative policy that just doesn't seem to be necessary. And with the two KFPs was confusing. And with the fee being the most important, sort of what the actual, is, we use P for procedure, but what the fee is, what the amount is to rent it. And KFR is the regulations on how to rent it. The KFP, that sort of that sample KFP is not necessary to have. And again, not helpful. It's confusing with what, the way that our, our policies are, are written.
Any questions for Freila? May, do I have a motion to approve retiring KFP, use of school facilities?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penian.
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff.
Yes.
All right, shows unanimous. Thank you. Thirteen point seven is the first reading of policy EEAA, Student Transportation Services.
So this policy, we've been working on all summer. We started actually before school let out in the spring. And we haven't changed a lot of the, the policy. It's pretty, actually pretty much the same. But we have made a, what I consider to be a pretty substantial change. So our language in our current EEAA is prescriptive in terms of the reasonable distance, at which point the school will pick up and transport. Now, in reality, our school offers transportation to all students. So we don't use this policy as a bar to transport people who may live too close to the school. But what we, the, what the committee is recommending is that we enlarge the amount that students need to walk right now. It's a quarter of a mile, removing that to a half of a mile for K through five. And then a little bit more for older students, and I'll get to that. It goes to a mile for six through twelve, for example. And it allow, it's, it'll, it is permissive language. So instead of prescribing that, at this point, you have to walk or, or the board will, will transport only at this point. It allows for some give, which essentially allows that it's no more than one. We, we put in the term no more than instead of one mile. So before it read, the distance shall be point two five miles to the end of the driveway to the school for K through five and a half a mile for six through twelve. And now it reads, a reasonable distance shall be no more than a half a mile from the end of their driveway to the school for K through five and no more than a mile for six through twelve. Other than that, there are no, we, we, I think we cleaned up a little bit of language, but we made virtually no substantive changes. The reason we're recommending that change is because although we don't, and, and we talked a lot about with, with Diane in the committee meetings, that we don't anticipate or expect any changes to be, be made. We expect that transportation will still be provided as it has been. With new schools coming online, with redistricting coming, we may want to move some bus stops. And this would allow more flexibility in the placement of those stops. We did a whole evaluation. Ray, again, Ray always gets homework from the, I feel like he gets a lot of homework from our committee. He actually researched if, if by enlarging these distances, we would be able to eliminate some bus routes, which would help us with our school bus shortage. It would, however, push that burden onto families, to be really clear, which is something that we weren't super excited about, but we wanted to be responsible for kind of the, to the current situation, which we have had a crisis and shortage of bus drivers for years. And at times, school buses, buses have had to double up and students have been late to school. And that hasn't happened a lot in this district. And we haven't ever not transported in this district. And that, I think, is due to some extraordinary efforts of our transportation supervisor and our transportation department, which really does an amazing amount of transportation without, without enough resources. And again, not, not resources from the school, but just not enough bus drivers to transport all our students. This would build in some flexibility to allow shifts in those bus stops. So that especially as new schools, I know that we're not, the proposal of the referendum passes would not be to move any schools. But there would still be some likely redistricting efforts. And so change is likely to come. And this would permit more flexibility in electing where to place, mostly placing bus stops for students to help the district and to sort of alleviate some of that stress on, on the driver's shortage if we can.
Thank you, Freila. Are there any questions for Freila? Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy EEAA, Student Transportation Services as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher. Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Ms. Turpenian.
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff.
Yes.
All right, shows unanimous. Thank you. Thirteen point eight is the first reading of policy IHBB, Gifted and Talented Education.
All right, so moving into our older policies, this is one of our oldest policies. We looked at whether we needed the policy. I think one, one of the things we looked at whether to keep it or not, and I'll get to IHBB dash R because we are recommending that we retire that policy next. But this policy, when we looked over the sample policy, this is, there is a sample policy by MSMA, which we looked at. And, you know, I think, I don't think this policy does a lot because there's a lot of regulation in law around gifted and talented programming. But Scarborough has always, you know, tried to, kind of our mission in trying to support all students where they're at means that's for students who need extra challenges in order to feel, in order to be challenged, in order to help them develop to their highest potential. Because we want to meet all students where they are. And for students who are gifted and talented, we want to make sure that they have work that's appropriate for their, for their skill level to help them develop. This would lay out the philosophy of the district and supporting that and the goals in having educational programming for students who are identified as gifted or talented. And that goes beyond just intellectual talent. It also is creative and artistic challenges. And so this is, it's a very short policy and it just, it does that. So happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Freila? All right, do I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy IHBB, Gifted and Talented Education?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein.
Yes.
Mr. Penian.
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff.
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. Thirteen point nine is the first reading of policy KCD, Public Gifts, Donations to the Schools.
Sorry, I was trying to get back to my Zoom button. So we've had a policy related to, get those right, policy to gifts and donations. This policy tracks closer, it, it, it was an older policy and it was very, if you look at the old policy, it's very specific in amounts and it's very prescriptive in exactly how this goes. The MSMA sample policy looked, I think, better to the board. Because it's more kind of, it's, it's kind of, was, it was, it's more vague, but it's more open, which is sort of this. You know, it allows us to accept on behalf of the school district money bequest property, but it only if we deem it suitable, so we don't have to accept it in case we get gifts that are more trouble than they're worth. But it's, it's what, it pretty much makes the gift property of the school, designates it for a, the school or department. So for example, if we got a piano that we wanted, go to the right department for that. But it also prescribes that only legitimate uses are accepted. There's no obligation to replace a gift if it gets destroyed, lost, or stolen. And that gifts are not accepted if they involve an excessive cost for maintenance or installation. But other than that, a board will notify in writing, prospective owners of their gifts cannot be accepted. And the superintendent will, as, as would, would carry out the administrative process related to accepting any of the gifts. Happy to take any questions on that.
Is this geared towards, like, things other than cash? Is that what we're talking about?
Sometimes people give gifts in kind. So like, a booster organization might donate equipment. For example, like the, the piano is the one that we were laughing about because a lot of people have pianos. Like, oh, well, they'll donate to the school, they'll love having a piano. But pianos are really expensive to move and maintain. And you want to have very specific pianos for the kind of service, you know, for our drama department or our music department. They, they're going to be fairly picky in how and what instruments they want to take on. Because once you take on a piano, you have to maintain it and they're very expensive to maintain. For example, as our fee policy that we just had first reading on has a fee for renting a piano so that we can tune it after a group uses it. Because if a drama organization has a play and uses a piano for a run, it's going to need to be tuned after that. So gifts, you know, cash gifts don't come with a whole lot of cost, but gifts in kind do. And a lot of people feel that, you know, may want to give gifts in kind. So it allows us to accept the gifts that are appropriate for us. But for gifts that may not be all that helpful or useful or may actually cost a school. For example, to maintain or install it, it would allow us to also pass on it. You know, with a lot of thanks in our hearts for people who want to donate to the school. We love that, but also making sure that the gifts or donations that we take on are, are responsible for our school to do so.
Yeah, another example would be the paint that Ace Hardware gave us for the Wentworth map painting that they did. They, they repainted the map on the Wentworth School. And that was, that paint was donated. Yeah. And that was, that paint was donated. Yeah. Good question. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy KCD Public Gifts Donations to the Schools as presented?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Penian?
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff?
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen point nine, no, thirteen point ten. Is the, um, motion to retire policy IHBBR Gifted and Talented Education Regulations.
Um, so as I referenced in the earlier policy for AI, IHBB, um, this, uh, regulations. Adds nothing. Um, it really, it's a list of, um, of, uh. Identifying abilities and then also a list of how those abilities will be measured. Um, everything in this policy has sort of been abbreviated by state law, which regulates a lot having to do with gifted and talented, um. Uh, curriculum. And so it's just, it's, it's just an unnecessary policy. It did, it didn't add anything.
All right, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve, um. The retirement of policy IHBBR Gifted and Talented Education Regulations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Penian?
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff?
Yes.
All right, shows unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen point eleven, our appointments, thirteen point eleven point one is the physical therapist.
Yes, Elizabeth Mayhar has been selected to fill this new position. Um, Ms. Mayor earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Health Studies. And her Doctor of Physical Therapy from Simmons College. She has twenty-one years of physical therapy experience working in Boston, Portland. Cape Elizabeth, and Scarborough as a staff physical therapist and a clinical liaison. I would respectfully ask you to appoint her.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the physical therapist as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No, 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 never mind. Disregard. Um, can we call the vote?
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Penian, uh, Tar, Tarpenian?
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff?
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen point eleven point two is a Wentworth teacher.
Yes, Allison Clark has been selected to fill this position due to a reassignment. Ms. Clark earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in English. And her Masters of Science in Literacy Education from the University of Southern Maine. She has been a looping first and second grade teacher for two years. And most recently, she has been a fourth grade teacher for the last seven years at Wells Agonquitt Community School. Um, she also served as their literacy achievement awards co-coordinator. And this was a leadership role wherein she coordinated a district-wide literacy contest, uh, for this school district.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Wentworth teacher as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, can we call the vote?
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Penian?
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff?
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. Thirteen point three is the high school mathematics teacher.
Yes, uh, Patrick Quinn has been selected to fill this position due to a resignation. Mr. Quinn earned his Bachelor of Science degree in mathematics from the University of Maine at Farmington. And for the last twenty-two years, he has been teaching math at Gardner High School. He has also served as a basketball referee for youth, middle, and high schools.
Awesome, thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve the high school mathematics teacher as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, can we call the vote?
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Penian?
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff?
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item fourteen point O is executive session. Fourteen point one is a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five sixty. For the purpose of discussing the professional staff contract to return to public session. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion?
Make it quick. Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Penian?
Yes.
Mr. Penny Huff?
Yes.
All right, we will be back in a minute. I'm sure I could just say.
Shannon.
So much, welcome back. Agenda item 15.0 is ratification of the professional staff contract 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, can we call the vote?
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Rockenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Pinion?
Yes.
Mr. Piniaf?
Yes.
All right, that shows unanimous. Thank you so much. Agenda item 16.0 is adjournment, so with no objections, we will adjourn at 8:50 PM. Thank you so much. Bye, Freila. Have a great rest of your trip.